Now that he's leaving.
We will start the commission meeting on June 1st, 2021. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present. Welcome to everyone. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has moved, the minutes have been approved and seconded, assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? If not, Chair will make a motion to approve the order of the agenda. Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? All right, thank you very much. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Item number four, the approval of the consent agenda. We have bills, employee status changes. Does anybody want anything pulled from that?
Chair will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Now, item number five is the current county board of equalization. I'm looking for a motion to recess the commission meeting and convene the county board of equalization.
So move.
And is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. This is a good day to.
Good afternoon. Today is county board of equalization. I don't expect this to take very long today. Submitted for your information is the preliminary comparison of the 2020 and 2021 taxable valuation, the increases or decreases. There was no change to agricultural land this year. We are at about 92.5% of the average set by India's zero. As provided by North Dakota Century Code 57-12-01, the first order of business is the equalization of assessments in cities. If there is anyone from a city who wishes to appeal, now is the time. Anyone from the city wish to appeal their value for 2021? In the event there are no appeals from property owners from the city, it is recommended that the 2021 assessments of all cities and classes of property be approved as returned by the city boards of equalization.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
So move.
Oh, second. Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion is carried. The second order of business is the equalization of assessments in townships.
Is there anyone from a township that wishes to appeal their 2021 value? Anyone from a township wish to appeal their 2021 value? Anyone from a township? Hearing on, Levance and Tribune Townships did not have a quorum at their township equalization meetings. Therefore, the county board of equalization needs to approve their 2021 assessment.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. And also, we need to approve the 2021 assessments of all townships and classes of property as returned by the township board of equalization.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you, that's it. I think this might be a record. Thank you very much.
Everybody in the audience.
Okay, I need to have someone adjourn the county board of equalization and reconvene the commission.
Motion to adjourn the board. Inconvenient.
Okay, all right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item on our agenda is public health, and we have a COVID-19 update. Welcome.
Chairman, each member of the commission, members of the commission, and Michael Doolittle with Grand Forks Public Health, prepared to give an update both on our health officer dashboard as well as touching on our vaccine plan in the county for this year. So, we're starting off first with the health officer dashboard changes, and these were changes I made in consultation with Dr. Walls, our health officer. Next slide. Why are we changing the dashboard? Our COVID-19, our overall actual risk in the community is changing as the vaccination rate in the community is changing. We still have cases present in the community, and there's still a chance that those cases could theoretically overwhelm the hospital system if the right circumstances presented itself. So there's still a need to have the dashboard, but the emphasis and weight of the dashboard changes as we have an increase in the number of vaccinated individuals. Vaccinated individuals for most intensive purposes do not need to be routinely tested because the data right now is showing that asymptomatic vaccinated people can't transmit the virus, and so the value of routine testing is decreasing, which is decreasing the number of tests in the community. Can go to the next slide. So what we're looking at for the changes for the dashboard are to add the vaccination rate as a score modifier on the dashboard. So we're subtracting the county vaccination rate from the total score to give us a modified score. We're also increasing the size of the red category. The reason why we're increasing the size of the red category is as we subtract the vaccination rate that kind of removes a lot of those warning signals that we would have because we're kind of shifting everything down. So we wanted to make sure that if we were actually in a critical state, like we were having our hospital capacity overwhelmed, or we are having a significant increase in cases, that that was going to show up on the dashboard appropriately. And then we also look to change the weights of the categories. Again, as I talked about on the last slide, kind of the two major driving factors that we can see right now are the case rate and the hospital capacity. The emphasis on tests completed, percent positivity, and change in case are a little bit decreased now because not everyone should be routinely tested, or you know, there aren't as many people that should be routinely tested. So those numbers are going to keep going down, and it was starting to affect the dashboard. You know, the next slide. So this is what the dashboard looked like on the last day that we were on the old methodology. As you can see, we were in the middle green. We had actually moved up into the yellow, not because of our case counts, but because of our decrease in testing. That's what prompted the change. Next slide. And so this is what the new dashboard looks like. So as you can see, based off of the different factors, the new cases, we're still at a one on the dashboard. So the weighted score was 0.4, and then we had 0.1 because of the decrease in tests. That put us down at 0.5 for the score. We have a 40% vaccination rate. Our modified score was 0.1. If we look back historically, it would fit pretty well with the conditions that were present in the community, such as the increases that we had in April and, you know, and towards the beginning of our vaccination campaign. This is another good place to stop and talk about how much our COVID vaccine, or sorry, how much our COVID case rate has decreased in Grand Forks County over the past few weeks. So actually, last week, we had a total of 12 cases as reported through data through yesterday. So only 12 cases. They, none of them were in a particular age group or anything like that. The only thing I have heard from our contact tracing team is it does seem like there's a good familial connection piece in a lot of the cases that we're seeing. So if a particular family is unvaccinated, hence they go through the family unit itself, and then, you know, it can potentially move on to other contacts. But overall, we are seeing a pretty hefty decrease in our COVID case rate. The increase, again, that we saw in mid-March, mid-Abril, does seem to be more of a uplift and kind of pointing us in the direction of significantly decreased COVID activity in the community. Next slide. So now moving on from our decreased COVID rate to how we're going to keep that COVID rate low. So we're talking about our summer vaccine strategy. Next slide. So our vaccination rate has kind of stagnated a little bit. So we did a great job at getting up right up to about 35%, and then we, I felt like we hit a wall. Over the past month or so, it's been, we've been having to fight for every single percentage or tenth of a percent on the number of people fully vaccinated, and the range of people that are waiting for their second doses has been decreasing as well. So we're at 41.5% of our Grand Forks County population who would be considered fully vaccinated. And then we have another about 2.8% who are not yet fully vaccinated. So they are waiting for their, presumably waiting for their second dose of Pfizer or Moderna. That leaves us with about 15.7% of the population left that we need to cover to reach kind of our 60% goal. When we move that into numbers, that's about a little over 10,000 people that we need to get vaccinated. Of that, we have about 28,000 people in the community that we have considered vaccine eligible. So we need to get about a third of the vaccine-eligible people left in the community vaccinated for us to reach that goal. It's not going to be an easy goal. It's not going to be like the Alaric Center where we can just build it and they will come. This is going to have to be a little bit stronger of a ground gate to reach out to people, get to them where they are, work a little bit harder for each dose that we give. Next slide.
Do you have a question, Mr. Doolittle? When you're talking about a percentage of population, so before, when we were 18 and older, so now are we including that population of 12-year-olds and up?
So from the outset, Chairwoman Peach, from the outset, we've always used the entire herd. So we're considering all of Grand Forks County to be our herd. So the, all of our percentages have been based off of everybody in the community. That is one difference between the way we report the numbers and the way you may see it reported in other places. There's a lot of talk of how we want to get 70% of all adults vaccinated by July 4th, or variations on that, where they're talking about just the vaccine-eligible population. When we look at that, that's that blue bar on the top graph. That would be our vaccine-eligible population. So we're at about, I think it's 48% roughly in that group. But it's easier for us to think about the whole herd because everybody's susceptible to COVID.
Thank you.
And we can go back to the next slide. So looking at the groups where we, where we need to target, so we look at the 65-plus age group, which I don't have a slide for. We're actually at about 90% of that age group who has received at least one dose of COVID vaccine in Grand Forks County. So we only have about 900 people that are 65 and older who have not been vaccinated. When we move down to the 18 to 64 age group, this is where we have a lot of people left that we still need to vaccinate. This is, we have roughly 22,000 people that we could still vaccinate in this age group, and we've only vaccinated about half of the total age group, which obviously makes up the lion's share of the community. Next slide. And then the other spot where we have opportunity is in the 12 to 17 age group, which is between 6,000 and 8,000 people, and we've only gotten about, or to about one-fifth of them. So really, the targeting opportunities are to that 12 to 17 age group, and then 18 to 64. Next slide. I just wanted to touch on what we're looking at, what we need to kind of be thinking as we're forecasting for what our vaccine strategy is going to look like. We've kind of had to adjust for a new normal. Again, our layers events, we did cram through up to 2,000 people per day for those events. And again, we hit that wall, and now our new normal that we're having to adjust to is about an average of 50 people per day. Next slide. So again, our goal remains 60%. We've got the wall hanging through with the Alaris vaccination events. Now we need to move up the tree. And so we need to think about the challenges. Challenges that we thought about, transportation, or motivation, or apathy towards getting vaccination. You just need to catch them at the right place in the right time. Hesitancy, there's always going to be a group that we are going to have a very difficult time reaching. But there's a lot of people that they just need the right trusted person to talk to them about vaccination. Time, a lot of people only go to a handful of places, and so if we can catch them at one of the handful of places that they go to, that's important. And then for the 12 to 17 age group, for initial consent. We saw with vaccination clinic with the school, we had difficulty reaching a lot of people there because the parents weren't able to consent for that beforehand. Next slide. And then we also looked at the different sources of vulnerability. So overall vulnerability, this is an index put together by a national firm looking at different national level factors to assess the vulnerability of Grand Forks County residents to both COVID and their ability to get COVID vaccination. There wasn't a lot in particular, aside from one part of Grand Forks, which they consider to be vulnerable. But household or transportation vulnerability, as we look out in the county, was a little bit bigger as we look around that kind of Emmerito, Laramore area. Next slide. And when we look out in the community, we're really limited in the number of vaccine locations when we get outside of Grand Forks. So these yellow dots represent an area within 10 miles. And so, you know, Laramore and Northwood both have vaccine locations as well as a number in Grand Forks, but we do, we do have a big kind of gap in there that we, you know, that we could fill. Next slide. So that's how we got to our goal. So our goal that we are presenting to you today is that our, our goal this summer is to provide a vaccine opportunity within 10 miles for 95% of the Grand Forks County residents. We'd be able to cover almost everybody except for the extreme northwest part of the, of the county. But everywhere else, I think we'll have a vaccine opportunity within 10 miles. Next slide. So what's this look like? It's the, the yellow, the yellow circles are existing vaccine sites. The green ones are what we're proposing. So we're looking at having a number of vaccine sites throughout Grand Forks this summer, as well as having vaccine sites in Gildy, Manville, Emmerito, and Thompson to help fill out the entire Grand Forks County. Next slide. So these are the proposed vaccine locations in the city of Grand Forks. To complement the county vaccine opportunities, we'd also be looking to vaccinate throughout the community of Grand Forks, where our goal would be to have a vaccine opportunity within a half mile for 95% of the population, under the assumption that an individual out in the county would likely have better means of access to transportation by necessity, whereas in Grand Forks, you may not. Next slide. So looking at our vaccine locations, how we're going to do this, we're going to have a four-week rotation of vaccine sites, including those county vaccine sites, which are at the bottom in the darker green. So we'll touch on each one of those county vaccine sites at one time in a four-week period, and then we'll repeat that four-week period again. So we'll have two four-week rotations this summer, and then we'll repeat as needed. Next slide. And we'll do that with our mobile vaccine unit. So we have a travel trailer that we purchased with CARES funds. We'll staff that with probably three people more, depending on what we anticipate our need will be. And then, and then we'll be able to provide the vaccine. We'll be able to provide all three types of vaccine anywhere where we provide in the county. We've had incentives offered to us, like a $10 off 50 coupon from Home of Economy. We've had opportunities to provide sweets or candy to individuals. We're open to other opportunities as well. Next slide. And to help decrease the amount of work on the Grand Forks Public Health staff who have been going full bore since the beginning of the pandemic, we wanted to offer this out to our vaccine partners. By having a centralized vaccine opportunity in, in Grand Forks, we took away the opportunities that all our vaccine partners had to provide vaccinations to low-hanging fruit, the people that they would rely on to pay the bills for the vaccine sites. And so we would actually be looking at subsidizing the vaccine location opportunities with partners such as Wellcore Health, Wells Medicine Center, things like that, that would help operate our vaccine, our mobile vaccine clinics, help staff them, and then they would have an opportunity to bill insurance and things like that for the vaccines that they are providing. If, if they turned down the vaccine clinic opportunities, we would be providing the location, the, the marketing, things like that, and they would be staffing it. So win-win. But if they would turn that down, we would staff all of the opportunities that we would have. So these opportunities are relatively set in stone. Next slide. So our next steps, we're doing dress rehearsal events last week and this week through a variety of locations. We're working on securing all the vaccine sites. So for instance, we have the Gildy site completely secured. We're working on the other few county sites, and then we're working on the marketing plan. We hope to do some targeted marketing in each of the locations that we would be getting to. And with that, I am open to any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Doolittle? Okay, well, thank you very much for the information, and let's hope that we can see our increases, increase on her community for vaccinations.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is juvenile detention administrator, Ms. Hanson. Welcome.
Chair Peach, and members of the commission, I'm here today, and I wish I didn't have to be, but we are in need of a full-time position in our detention center. We've just had a situation where my part-timers are working more than normal, and we've had a couple people deployed. And we've had some situations where spouses had to go to deployment areas, and we've had sickness, we've had vacation, and our last hiring process, we had 14 applicants, and none were, were hirable, were suited for the position. Some were across the nation, some didn't show up for even the interviews. And we've had a process where I've had to have one of my part-time females work excess of hours in addition to the 20 hours. So I'm in a situation where I need to create a full-time position because I am in need of one. I wish I wasn't here, but I've spoken with HR about it, and it's like, you need to promote, you need to put that person into a full-time position for the hours necessary to fulfill the schedule needs that we have.
Okay.
Question. See, we've talked about this, but maybe you could explain, is there going to be a, when we hire the full-time person, provided we do, is that replacing a part-time?
Yes, it is.
So it's not, it's not an entire salary.
No, the part-time person that we're promoting with, promote with you taking care of two part-time positions. So it's not like I still wouldn't need a couple part-time people, but that person would be working the 40 hours instead of 20. So that I have half that position still in my salary, but when we looked at the salary range going up because of benefits, it put it at $39,635.43. It's not the month of June. This person wouldn't go full-time till July, so that would be a little bit lesser, probably $33,973. The benefit side of it, I know, you know, my part-time, you have to, you have to put the salary in for a family insurance, which elevates it to this amount, which I don't think it will be. I think we're looking at about 25 at the max, 20,000. Yes.
When your military person comes back.
Okay, one has, one has been deployed to Kuwait and would like to, and that was a full-time position that I had on the male side that won't come back till February and would like to come back as he's returning to school to a part-time position. One will be deployed to Tennessee for some type of training within the next month, and one of our females just is on leave right now because her husband has been deployed as well. So it's just like, it can't, it just catapults sometimes, and it's unexpected. And then we've had people be sick too, and out of the office, and then people wanting to take vacation, and it's, it's a need.
So what you're looking for then is a motion to approve a full-time position within your department with an additional $25,000.
Debbie, would you think that's correct? Because you said to look at the part-time budget, and I looked at, you know, where that person would be with my part-time hours, and that's what I calculated out, about 25.
That would be the offset.
Yeah, the offset for the end of the year, right.
So if you do make a motion, if you would approve amending the juvenile detention budget for the $25,000 for an additional full-time person, beginning in 2021. What are the wishes of the commission?
I would make a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time person for juvenile detention and amend her budget in the amount of $25,000 for the 2021.
Yes.
And I guess that's probably a, an estimate, and it'll just have to be what it is. So, but it's a start. So, that's all.
Okay, all right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and make sure that any, that that position will be put into the budget for 2022. Correct. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, design and construction engineering services for the county building chiller replacement bid opening results.
Or the handle complete, so one of you just might share with the other. We commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to, to present this to you. We have received three very qualified proposals from engineers interested in our chiller replacement plan for the, for the county office building. All three of them have very reputable experiences, experience and references to, to the point of being highly qualified for, for what we're, what we're needing in our chiller replacements for engineering services for this project. Upon Tom Ford's and my review of the proposals on Thursday, on the 27th, when we opened them, and with asking engineer Nick West to, to review them as well. He briefly reviewed them today. Each of these prospective firms have valid, applicable experience to handle the project. Two of them have worked for the county as, or been, for our county, for Grand Forks County, or have been partnered in projects in the past. One has not, and based on the previous county experience and more effort in determining the scope of work for this project, the approach that A E 2 S has put forth is the reason why we have considered them in the, yes, first place in the, in the ranking. Our second place ranking then is Martin Mechanical, and third place then would be JTK. If the, if the commissioner would, if the commission would agree to or approve pursuing this project with A E 2 S, that was our selection of choice to use as our engineering firm to get this project, or to keep this project rolling. And this, again, is just for the engineering services that they are proposing, that they would have to open bids or go for the bidding of contractors and so forth.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions on Mr. Grishatsky?
We did have that discussion, and Nick West is obviously much more familiar with engineering proposals. Typically, that is not a, a bid process. It was not a, it was not a request of physical numbers for the engineering services to be proposed to us. It was bring your credentials to the, to the table so we can select an appropriate firm in that respect. One did offer, offer the AP of what their anticipated total would be. The other two did not.
What was the anticipated total by the way? What was the anticipated total by the way?
A E two S proposed forty-seven thousand dollars for their, for their fee. Yeah, J P K and Martin Mechanical did not put a, put a fee rate in there for their services.
Question.
Raise your hand.
And the fee rate was not a part of yours and Mr. West and Mr. Ford's decision-making process, is that correct? Correct, our, our selection was based on familiarity with the firm and, and the experience that they used with or had and brought to the table for the county before they've done, A E two S has done a fair amount of projects for the county to our satisfaction, so that was one of the considerations. And their availability immediately upon retainership, they will get started on the project and move forward.
Any other questions? Not, what are the wishes of the commission? Raise your hand.
I would move to proceed with the hiring of A E two S for the engineering of the county office building chiller replacement.
Is there a second to that motion, commissioner? Okay. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried.
Thank you. I might, I might add, sorry. Those four copies are the only four copies that I had, Ms. Nelson will need a copy for the, for the man of significance, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is team brand pork's update, Mr. Phelan, do you prefer that we wait until five, closer to five P M?
I think that would be best.
Okay. Oh, county, oh, the county building face covered.
Can you talk about that?
Yes, we will talk about that, thank you. Okay.
So does it feel like?
We, I'm, right now, there is still across county property that is a requirement for masks to be worn. The governor has changed the, the policy slightly to be a little bit more relaxed than what the county has at this time. I know that we have received some letters from community members. One you did get in an email that was concerned about the county fair, since a lot of the activities at the county fair are outdoors. I did visit with Paris gets, she called me last week and told me that she was comfortable in moving forward to, to have the county say that mask wearing is optional and not required in, in county facilities and on county property. Paris had already, had also been in touch with Debs Watson on public health. And Debs Watson said she didn't see that there was a problem with moving forward on that as well. So I just wanted to report that information to you and, and then move forward on discussion. So does anybody want to make any comments?
No, Chair, I just, you know, I'm president over at the senior center. And the policy there just got changed on June first. Or excuse me, yeah, June first, where if you're vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask inside the building. If you have not, or if you have not been vaccinated, you must wear, you know, a mask inside of it. They don't check to make sure, but it is posted on the door and I think that's just the appropriate thing to do right now. If you're not vaccinated, you need to wear a mask.
And I believe that some of the signage that has been taken place in other community, in other areas or businesses, commissary.
Well, how's that gonna work at the county fair, or the regional fair, where reports of the locals that are gonna be young? Kids were working for it, I was not pleased with the email that sent to all of us, I think it was rather outrageous. But the point of having to wear a mask in all of those situations is a little difficult. Here in the county building or in the senior center and certainly in our, in our health facilities. I don't know what to do about how phrase that when it comes to the mostly open-air activities at the fair and at the racetrack and all these like.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree. It's problematic, I, I think we treat those as outdoor facilities and their masks aren't required. You know, it's kind of like being in Lincoln Park or at the golf course or it's open air. And the chances right now, you know, and we're probably gonna get another wave of this because we don't have enough vaccinated people. And we may have to address it at that time, but I think for the foreseeable future, we can get by with it's, it's an open-air facility, we call that a, a, a racetrack and they're fine without it.
Right, okay.
Mister Nah, has there been any comments or any discussion held with the fair board regarding mask wearing?
There's a couple emails, but nothing at our meetings other than, or at our board meetings, you know, where they've asked, you know, the direction we're going in, which I didn't know what that was gonna be. So they know that we are going to have a discussion on it and, you know. But my guess is that, you know, the direction we're leading is there not be face masks requirement. You know, and it's hard because with River Cities, we have the requirement, but it's not being followed. So I don't see where the fair grounds would be any different. So I guess I'm, I'm with the.
Any other comments? Would anybody in the audience choose to comment on mask wearing? Ms. Steel?
Oh, Ms. Watson, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you in there, you sit, I apologize for that. Did you want to address anything with that? Okay, Ms. Steel, did you want to state something?
Ever since the C B C made their changes and we've been hearing different things, we've had a lot of discussion with employees who have come and just asked, and I think the majority of them would be comfortable with what you've recommended. Bringing up a sign that says, you know, if you haven't been vaccinated, that they recommend a face mask. I have noticed that we still have people coming through and, you know, picking up masks from the two stations we have downstairs. And I think the biggest thing is, you know, being professional and understanding and not doing any kind of shaming to your neighbor if they are or are not wearing a mask, because even those who are vaccinated may choose to wear one because it's their comfort level. So that's the biggest thing that, that I have, and I feel that as far as the employees are concerned that the department heads can work with H R if any, anyone's having any kind of issues in their departments.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, so, is that being that we draw the sort of county building as well?
To me, it would be cross-board.
It would be a cross-board, yeah.
It isn't just outdoor, it's incorrect as well, so it's cross-board, thank you.
But it, yeah.
Would we say is it not required or would we just say, or optional or not required?
Well, in my thoughts, you know, I thought it in the open-air area that they're not required at all. I kind of agree with Mr. Ross that, and I've seen that called to a business at your account where if you are not vaccinated, then you should be wearing a mask indoors.
Do we say required or, oh, recommend, strongly recommended?
Recommended.
You know, if you're not vaccinated, you're coming to the county building, are we saying required or recommended, please wear a mask? I think it's easier.
Well, the thing is, is then if you say it's required, I mean, you can't, you can't check it anyhow and you don't know, so what's the point? I mean, recommend it.
And Mr. Griszewski, we will continue to provide masks or make them available at entrance levels of all the county buildings, is that correct?
Yeah, I would, I would still say the usage is probably two-hundred-and-fifty masks a week go off the counter there, so there's, there's still, there's still a draw of usage there.
What are, and do you want to make comments, Chair? Okay.
Chair, I would like to make a motion that as far as wearing face masks in the building, that's recommended, if you do not or are not vaccinated, that you wear a mask. If you are vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask and that how, and the fairgrounds are open-air, no masks will be required at all.
Okay, there's a motion, does someone want to make a second?
Also.
Okay. There is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. So I assume that staff will get the appropriate signage out for the buildings so that all staff are in that it is now recommended and not required. Okay, item number ten, keep moving forward. Okay, I, you just tell me when to stop, okay? And then we'll put you in there, thank you. We'll link with number ten, we still have a few members of team brand works here to show up. Item number eleven, finance and tax, Ms. Nelson.
Madam Chair, we're with the commission, I have a budget to actual report through April. So we're through one-third of the year at this point, and that's thirty-three percent of the year. What revenues collected in the general fund, seventy-seven point seven eight percent at the end of April, expenditures at thirty-five point eight eight, so just a little above thirty-three percent. Projected cash at the end of the year, seventeen point five million dollars in the general fund. That includes just over a million dollars of restricted cash. Road funds is both the levy for wooden building and the highway. Where seventy percent revenues collected, twenty-one percent of expenditures spent and projected and the cash balance of one point two million. Capital construction, we have two projects in there. We've collected eighty-six point seven-six percent of our revenue. Expenditures, fourteen point five eight percent are big payment for the correctional center happens in November. And that's when you will see the expenses increase there. We're almost right on track with our ending cash balance net fund. And we have the weed control at sixty-four point eight-nine percent. And the chores at twenty-four fifty-eight or six percent, the summer hasn't begun yet, and that's when their expenses. We anticipate about a hundred thousand dollars left over at the end of the year. And then we have all our additional levies, the levy for the general fund, this is through April. And if you look at the emergency fund, remember at the last meeting I had asked that you take money out of the emergency fund and have a separate one and right now it looks, it's still in there at end of April, so you'll, that'll look different next time you see this report. For the, so overall, we're at forty-five percent of our expenditures and seventy-six percent of our revenues for the year. Then we have a breakdown of the general fund. The human service zone indirect costs, we're at fifty percent so far this year, or through April. We talked about purchasing some chairs out of the twenty-twenty-two budget and we, we thought maybe we should pay for that in twenty-twenty-one instead and take it out of the twenty-twenty-two budget. If we replace all the chairs, it would be thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for forty-nine chairs that haven't been replaced yet. So I would like to have a motion to amend the budget for the human servant zone indirect costs for thirty-three five and pay for that in twenty-twenty-one.
What are the wishes of the commission?
I think I wrote it down, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we purchase the forty-nine chairs for the human service zone for at thirty-nine thousand, five hundred approximately. And amend their budget, their direct costs of chairs, thirty-three thousand, five hundred.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Another thing that was discussed during our administrative services commission, our committee, was the buildings and grounds. They had requested forty thousand dollars for a tractor and actually that was part of the twenty-twenty-one capital improvement request from that department. And instead of having it in their twenty-twenty-two budget, I would like to pay for that out of the capital improvement budget, which we still have funds in that budget. So approve not only the tractor for forty thousand dollars, but some carpet cleaning equipment, two machines for thirteen thousand dollars. And pay for that out of the twenty-twenty-one capital improvement budget and take it out of the twenty-twenty-two budget request.
Any questions of commissioners? What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve it, sounds like a good way to plan for next year.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
And Chair, we have approximately at the end of the year about five million dollars in our, our bonds left to pay. And I think it would be a good idea to use cash reserve to pay those bonds off this year and not levy for them in twenty-twenty-one. My request would be to set aside approximately five million dollars to pay off the correctional center and the courthouse bonds in twenty-twenty-one and not levy for them in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, is there any this week's motion?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call, oh.
And that, that'll save us interest also, obviously.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Question where that comes from?
County preserve, our, our cash reserve, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
You can see all the, the different departments in the general fund and where they are at the end of April. We're overall at thirty-five percent, thirty-five point seven percent, some of the items get paid immediately at the end of the year, so we're slightly over thirty-three percent, but we're, we're on track and doing well. The other thing I would like to ask you is our current policy for the interim fund, the cash reserve is fifty percent of the general fund expenditures. This is slightly below the recommendation of the government finance officers association of a minimum of two months of general fund expenditures. The G F P A recommends the interim should be set anywhere from three to six months of expenditures. The North Dakota century code fifty-seven fifteen twenty-seven allows up to seventy-five percent of current appropriations to be carried over to the next fiscal year to meet cash requirements. I request a motion to be set, to set the interim fund at twenty-five percent or three months of general fund expenditures. And this will help during our budget process to have this.
Any discussion?
Joe, I would make that motion.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, it has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any questions? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Okay, does anybody have any questions relative to the budget? All right, then we will move on to, thank you, Ms. Nelson. All right, then we will move on to, thank you, Ms. Nelson. We will move on to the State's Attorney's Report, um, Ms. Womsted.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I do not have any questions.
Okay. Then we will move on to committee reports. The uh, or Bob, are you going to do the, the coroner vehicle in your report? Okay, all right, Commissioner Ross.
I have my report, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Engen.
No, nothing to talk about.
Okay, Commissioner Ross.
Um, we talked about it, the administrative services meeting, about the uh, the coroner getting an additional vehicle this year, uh, along with the other one that she getting, uh, so that it would not appear in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And uh, the administrative services, that was probably a good idea. So that bid price will not change between those two vehicles. They're all state vehicles. Uh, but I would also include the tunnel cover and the running boards for that first vehicle to be put on the second one also.
Do you know what that cost would be, Commissioner Ross?
Uh, that monitor, I could not have that in front of me.
I don't either, but it's in the, in the.
Yeah. And that, yeah, you, uh, you've got that paperwork that needs to have the signature of the chair for yourself. I think it was right around twenty-eight thousand something for just the vehicle.
It's one thousand ninety-three dollars.
For the tunnel cover and running boards, yeah.
So we need to approve that, both vehicles or is one already?
Oh, it's already approved, okay.
Um, and uh, Ms. Nelson, would that funding come from recovery act dollars or?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think it should come out of capital's purpose.
Okay. Okay. All right, what, what are the wishes of the commission?
I would like to make that motion and to approve that vehicle uh with the running boards in there and the tunnel cover.
Be in the twenty-twenty.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioners have any questions? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Anything else, Commissioner Ross?
Just if, if Madam Monitor could get that faxed over to Nelson voters.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Falk.
I have nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing to report either. Um, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Ms. Nelson.
Madam Chair, there are two items that we already have under unfinished new business, and I got two additional items today. And I want to take one and pass it down.
You want to deal with the social detox since it's letter A before we do the transition?
We could do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
So we have uh the social detox agreement, and it's for twenty-twenty-one. And we have already paid based on the schedule that's listed here. We just don't have an official agreement. So we'd need um a motion to approve the social detox facility funding agreement for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Any questions of the commission? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve the social detox funding agreement for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it with the addition of that chair's signature.
Okay. Thank you. You agree with that, sir?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item is the NDCCA Standing Committee.
Chair, the commission, yeah, status. If you're looking for anybody interested in the county commission association member. Quite much that for to be made. Um, so if you're interested, they need to know by July fourteenth. Let me know and I'll let them know.
Okay, so that gives you a little bit of time to think about that if you're interested in participating um in the leadership of the NDCCA. All right, then the next item on the agenda under um unfinished business.
Yep, those two items that I just passed out, I got today. One is regarding the Red River Bio or Primary Bonds. And there's some additional disclosures that they need to inform us about. And then we need to acknowledge acceptance, so um, Ms. Womsted thought it should be signed by the chair. And so I, I did have her review the document, and it's just to say how they are required to notify us. And we are to acknowledge that we have received it. And so I would request that the chair, we allow a motion be made to allow you to sign and acknowledge that.
Okay, are there any questions of Ms. Nelson or Ms. Womsted based on this um agreement?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This seems to be a routine thing. Would you approve that, Ms. Womsted?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um yes, I would generally agree. Um, I think it's a requirement that they have based on some of the rules governing these types of transactions. Also, just to clarify, I think uh my concern with having Ms. Nelson sign it was in the last paragraph of page two, it indicates that um she would have the authority to bind the county by contract. But I think either the motion could be for the chair to sign or designating her, that Ms. Nelson, the authority to sign. Either way would be fine.
Thank you, Ms. Womsted. Are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no questions, what are the wishes of the board?
Move the rules of signing this document and either the chair or if you would, it was amazing that Nelson she could sign.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Next item is an agreement um that the county correctional center has with Walsh County. And there was an additional uh requirement by PRIA standards in that section eight of this agreement. So we already have this agreement in place, and so what was added was what, uh, section eight. And that's listed here, and it has been reviewed by Ms. Womsted too. We need that uh motion to approve the chair's signature on this agreement.
Okay, are there any questions of the commission of Ms. Nelson or Ms. Womsted? Womsted, just review that with us. I haven't had time to read it, so I think we just got it, so.
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, this is an agreement with Walsh County to house some of their prisoners. My review of this agreement is it's consistent with um the prior agreement that was entered into with Walsh County with the exception of the underlying portions which were added, um, which is located on page three, um pertaining to the PRIA standards governing jails and prison facilities.
Any questions? If there are no other questions, what are the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement uh with the uh chair's signature.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Anything else under unfinished business? Okay, um. Are you ready? Okay, then we will go back to uh item number ten, Team Grant Forks update. Welcome.
That'd be a bigger group area, that's why I waited.
We have one more. Dr. Armakosteta had another engagement. He's going to get here at the end, hopefully, and just write in in time to tell him. Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for allowing Team Grant Forks to provide a brief recap of our top-level community accomplishments during the twenty-one North Dakota legislative session. First, what is Team Grand Forks? Team Grand Forks formed twelve years ago with the chamber bringing together the city, the county, the EDC, and UND to jointly identify key projects, mainly infrastructure projects, that we would collectively work on to be funded. Over the past six legislative sessions, nearly a billion dollars of funding has been secured. Yes, that's billion with a B. Um, Team Grand Forks also uh meets monthly to develop a strategy to help us strengthen relationships with legislators and state leaders throughout the state while showcasing what's being done with funding from previous sessions. We also work to identify priorities and key opportunities to pursue during future legislative sessions. Commissioner Falk and Tom Ford are your two representatives in that group at those monthly meetings. We communicate our priorities and strategy to the twelve Grand Forks legislators. Over the years, once, and once again, this session for sure, our local delegation has worked together very closely on these top community projects. This is really one of the things I think separates Grand Forks from other communities in North Dakota. We have these joint priorities as three top-level organizations, and we, we work together to actually accomplish, accomplish that. A lot of other cities have different factions, and they don't get on the same page, and that's really what's made a big difference. So at this point, rather than hopping around our agenda, I'm going to talk about the UAS highlights, which Tom Ford will be presenting next week, Monday, at the city council. He's really our UAS expert. And you guys all know about Grand Sky, I'm sure, so. First of all, Grand Sky, we went into this session requesting seven point five million dollars and hoping we could get that much. But realistically, we knew we needed it for sure, have three point five to continue with the next tranche of infrastructure out at Grand Sky. Um, we're pleased to report we ended up getting seven million dollars funded, so I would consider that a very, very big success. Beyond Visual Line of Sight, we went into the session hoping to get twenty million and five million carryover. We ended up getting nineteen million and five million carryover, so twenty-four million for the Beyond Visual Line of Sight project. Which of course, as you guys, you folks all know, that's headquartered in Grand Forks. Um, the last two pieces, the next one's the UAS test site. In the governor's budget, we ended up getting two million in, we ended up getting three million total funded for the UAS test site. That's also in that new multi-tenant building out at Grand Sky when that building's complete. So again, things are going very well at Grand Sky. Finally, um, one million dollars in UAS, UAS training funding was also secured this, this session. Um, that'll be used throughout the state, probably headquartered out at Williston State College. But we will have a number of UAS training companies located here in Grand Forks that have locations out in the western part of the state that will actually end up doing that training and being part of that overall program. So overall, um, the UAS industry and Grand Sky had a tremendously positive legislative session. And I want to thank the county for their support with this agenda. We couldn't do it if we all didn't work together, as I said earlier. So at this point, I'd like to call Todd Feelenup to talk about some of our infrastructure successes.
Madam Chair, Paige, and members of the commission, nice to be here. Also want to thank you for, well, I think we're, we don't want to declare victory, but we're near the end of this COVID-nineteen, and we've got a great institutional group and really working collaboratively in advance. So I think that's been one of the hallmarks of this community is that we didn't need a governor to tell us to get our act together and do that advance um between the city and county, UND, and all through another, so that, and Madam Chair, Paige, you kind of finished us out, and we started with Madam Chair. And now, so that's a really thing that moved us forward, and I think we were quite successful, both public health wise and economically. And so it's nice that we're moving forward and better than ever, so just a thank you on that. Uh, before I get into the infrastructure, and thank you, Barry, just a couple of highlights that, that are Team Grand Forks, the things that we worked on. Uh, number one, as far as the tax commissioners' budget, uh, we did, as a teammate, like to get, there's a proportion of the tax that goes back to fire departments. And so for Grand Forks, that funding meant about, uh, means about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand per year. That comes back from insurance premiums and that, and rural fire departments share in that funds. And we were successfully able to move that forward. We wanted it to report as an ongoing appropriation, but they only approved this, this for, by name, so we'll be back to try to get it ongoing, so we don't have to fight it uh year to year. The second thing I see, Miss Alt, is on, on, on the TV there, but again, Siren, we were able to move that for, not only for first responders, but for other responders, whether they're, you know, public works, highway department, those folks. So we were able to expand another great partnership of working with our PSAP nine-one-one, on the interoperable radio program and move that to the next level. And I think we're one of the first organizations, I'm sure you've heard from this all, so again, we're leading. We're not following, and it's really exciting all that we're doing, that we're working together. Regarding the infrastructure side, one of the first things that was the prairie dog in, and, you know, sadly, some of the revenue in that bucket went down, and so we were able, we did preserve the program, and we said that's one of our number one infrastructure programs. Uh, one change that's not to our positives, that we didn't, um, both cities and counties moved behind the state's SEP fund, or which is called the Strategic Infrastructure Investment Fund. So it's their large bank, um, silo that the state has that they put a lot of money in, and then they have a lot of flexibility in where they want to appropriate. Well, the state put themselves first before the city and county, so we'll have to see how this upcoming binding go. Um, it's a pretty high bucket um to get past. Um, and then if, if we get past that, then cities and counties are, are next in line. So for Grand, City of Grand Forks, that means about twelve million dollars, up to twelve million, but of course, if our bucket doesn't fill, we don't get it. So I think we're kind of at the point of probably assuming a certain percentage less of what the maximum can be. So hopefully, oil prices come along steadily so that both that bucket will fill, for the cities and counties, we're in that same then, and we'll be able to move forward with some one-time infrastructure projects. They did move forward and, and did improve other infrastructure as part of that, so that was one benefit too. But it's generally roads, water, broadband, um, public safety types of things. That's one good thing we were able to preserve that. The other program that they did move forward with the state legislature is they expanded the infrastructure loan program. And that's a two percent, thirty-year, up to thirty-year loan program. Right, um, municipalities and counties were capped at fifteen million. They did expand that to forty million, and so we are now eligible from the forty-nine and big ones. Loans, um, because the revenue bond market is pretty attractive right now. The two percent used to be really good. And so, um, you know, we're selling some bonds now, either around one point eight percent. So it's not as attractive, but it's, it's got a lot of flexibility. And as we look to more kind of essential infrastructure, it is an opportunity that we have over the next two years, and at least they've expanded that dollar. The other thing that we're working on with you is, um, and Mr. West, is we've worked on these large transportation infrastructure projects. We have led with the grade separation on Forty-second and Demers. Uh, we're further along in that project, so we're updating a primary engineering plan on that, so that's been our number one project. Our number two project has been the forty-seven thousand interchangers. Will help both the south and development, also Thirty-second out of the south, uh, kind of really some of the pressure that as we move south into the west. And I think we have some tremendous um economic development proj, projects in that. We are in the midst of an EIS, going to kick out with the state of North Dakota, and so the city's going to cash you with that of a million and a half and a million and a half million. So we anticipate over the next two years, fin, finalize that EIS, hopefully having a project we can move forward with, and we'd like to move forward with that project. And then finally, those, we'll say the inner-city bridge and the riverfront bridge are on our list too. So, um, we know the state, similar to what, um, you know, the city and the county are going to receive ARCA funds. The state's going to have ARCA funds in excess of a billion dollars. They haven't allocated those funds. They, I understand, they're going to come back this fall as part of the redistricting, and they're going to find ways to appropriate that money. So I think we want to be in line with large infrastructure projects regarding that, so that's what we're working on with the grade separation and hopefully have that project correct. I think the other thing that's really important, all those projects from bridges to interchanges to the grade separation is that we're ready to go, because I can anticipate one of those things, the city or the state legislature, their bonding bill. And so they cleared the decks on a lot of large projects, one being the F and diversion. And given them some of their final funding loans, and so they, they bonded about one point one billion. Uh, vast majority of that has been going the F and. Vast majority of that has been going the FM diversion. So the thought is, the decks have been cleared. Minot and Service, that protection is going to get some funds too. But I think the next session, we want to continue to move forward with our projects, as noted, so that we're ready and we're in line from a planning and environmental assessment, so that we're ready to move forward with projects. Because I anticipate in future bonding sessions, they're going to open it up to transportation-related projects that are large and have regional impact, and that we want to make sure we're ready. So I'm glad that we're moving forward on the EIS and interchange. I'm glad we're moving forward on the MPO study regarding traffic, and there's a lot more steps on bridges. But we should really focus our attention the next two years to move that project forward. If we're going to move forward with the interstate bridge, and if we're going to move forward with that, we'll call it, you know, farm-to-market. Market, thank you. So we should move forward. So I know some people are skeptical, but we should at least move them forward so that if they are the right project for the right time, that we have them in place, and we don't have to go on a long story about we're not quite ready, but we'll be ready. So I really encourage us to work together on those projects, get them ready, so that there are funding opportunities in the next two years and beyond, and we're ready to go on that. The other thing that the state legislature did is, they set aside funds to invest in projects that are North Dakota-based, you know, not only investing in them as companies, but also investing in infrastructure. And so we have some large, I'll call it acre business projects we're working on that we may need to help with infrastructure to serve them. I think there's some opportunities for us to work together on that. So I think those are some really terrific opportunities on that. The final project is the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And again, the city's helping to lead that, along with the Fargo-Moorhead metro area. We've that project for about 13% to 14% of that project. The other vast majority of that is the FM area. So we're continuing to work on that. We think we're going to receive another $15 million on that, at 75% state-funded, 25% local. And so I would anticipate in the next two years, in two years from now, when they go to the legislature, that will be one of the large projects, similar to the FM diversion, where the state will want to kind of really engage in how they're going to help fund that project and move it forward. So when you're talking about an over-a-billion-dollar project, 50 million isn't going to get you very far. So I think the thought was, next session, that'll be one project where I'm going to focus on it. That's really important to our region for the next 100 years, not only Grand Forks, but rural water providers too. With that, as I concur with Barry, lots of good things to happen, and I think over the next two years, let's get ready for further projects and get ourselves in line. Thanks for all that you do. I think I'm supposed to hand it over to Mr. One.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Pete One, Grand Forks Economic Development Corporation. I echo comments made by Barry and Mr. Beeland, and really compliment the Team Grand Forks approach to this. I know we all talked to our colleagues across the state, and you know, when I talk to economic developers across North Dakota, they always say, how did you guys do that? And I think it really just stems from the collaboration that we have amongst the team, locally here in our delegation and our representatives in this mark. So I echo the strength of this effort. I've been asked to talk about LIFT and research considerations. I really, it's a part of, I think, the Team Grand Forks agenda, focusing not only growth of our economy, but diversification of our economy. And I think we're very fortunate to have a governor's office, the Department of Commerce, the legislature, and local leaders in our community that want to see that. I think we're all very proud of our heritage in terms of our economy based on agriculture and energy, but want to add value to those sectors as well as growing the sectors as well. So I'll talk about LIFT, which is Legacy Innovation Technology Fund. So North Dakota Legislature, last session, not the one we just concluded, but two years ago, really focused on how do we grow and support earlier-stage or even mature companies in trying to implement and commercialize new technology and grow that sector of our economy. They established a 15-million-dollar LIFT fund to do just that. And I'm proud to say that 19 projects were funded, and Grand Forks region had eight of those projects, so 42% of punched our weight a little bit there. And 5.2 million of that 15 million dollars was awarded to those same companies, so 35%. So we're very proud of the companies that were able to attract those investments, and all those companies are here and going today. Legislature, I fair to say, saw value in that, as did our local Team Grand Forks. We supported that, and they approved that for this session as well. And we're looking forward to that opening up, and we have a number of companies that we have encouraged to apply and to further establish themselves in Grand Forks and Grand Forks County. I will also say that I talked about in our meeting just prior, Grand Forks Growth Fund established sort of a complimentary program. So I think some local resources, we were able to support and complement, and then help to grow our economy in that regard as well. So very proud of that investment. LIFT actually came out of, or I should say, research discussion, and the LIFT program came out of conversations around research two years ago. And I will say that the conversation on research, and that goes a long way. It's been described as, you know, the research is maybe 80% of an effort, and then commercialization, maybe the last 20%. And so we've had some conversations over maybe three sessions about the value of research and supporting that, particularly at the two research institutions, UND and ESU. So I will say that two sessions ago, maybe three sessions ago, we had some conversations, didn't get much traction. Last session, started to get a little bit of traction. LIFT came out of that. This session, we had a little bit more. There was a bill that really focused on how to establish priorities for future legacy fund earnings. Things like paying bond debt, if you're going to issue bonds, you need to pay that. But $30 million of that sort of future prioritization was focused on investments such as LIFT, such as research and research innovation grants. And so I think it's important to say that the legislature has now said that research is an important part of where we want to go and invest in as a state, and they've established that party, I guess, moving forward. Happy about that. I'm going to watch script a little bit, Barry doesn't mind, he's way over there, so I don't think he has much of an option. We talked a lot about sort of workforce as a big challenge in North Dakota, and I know Team Grand Forks supported this, so I think I'm safe. A lot of discussion two years ago and even this year about the notion of career academies or CTE workforce centers, the name sort of evolves. I'm really happy to report that the legislature approved $70 million to support the expansion of current tactical education and centers across North Dakota. And so Becca, in our previous conversation last hour, talked about a regional effort to try to establish that and a number of steps we're taking to demonstrate that we have the right partnerships in place. And so that funding is available to communities that put those right relationships in place. They are prioritizing as part of that process, centers that align K through 12, education and industry, and we're focused on doing that. And also, I think very importantly, that include more than one school district. So in terms of Grand Forks County, how the more regional schools are part of that career academy or CTE center. So we're very focused on leveraging the resources that the legislature has provided and moving that forward as well. And with that, I'm not sure who I'm turning it over to, President Armicost? Thank you for your time.
Well, good evening. My name is Andy Armicost, and the president of the University of North Dakota, and it's a delight to be here. I've seen you all on TV screens and Zoom sessions, and it's good to be here face-to-face and really to share some of the great successes. You've heard quite a bit from the others as well, and I appreciate them putting me at the end of the session, simply because I had a previous engagement that caused me to arrive late, and I apologize for that. But as the others have said, this was a really resounding success in the legislative session this year. It was my first time going through it. I had no idea what to expect, but the support that I got from Team Grand Forks and the support that we all got from our legislative delegation was absolutely tremendous. And as we put forth ideas, they were instrumental in helping us refine those ideas and then to sell these ideas to the colleagues, or to make sure that they understood what it was that we were trying to accomplish. Going into the session, there was a lot of uncertainty. If you recall, the governor put his proposed budget together, and for higher ed, this involved a 7.5% reduction from what should have been our baseline funding. And that baseline funding is established through what's known as the Higher Education Funding Formula. And so when we saw the governor's proposal, which was based on kind of a weak economic forecast, we were a tad bit concerned. The good news is several things happened throughout the session. One, the economic forecasts, the revenue forecasts improved. And then in addition, I think the story of higher ed and its benefit to the state really resonated with the legislature. So as a consequence, we received what our number-one goal was, and that was a fully-approved, what we call needs-based budget, which again was based on a funding formula that was legislatively approved. And this amounted over the biennium to $151 million for UND proper, and then another $68 million to support our School of Medicine and Health Sciences. And so we were pleased with those numbers. It allows us to offer programs in ways that we could plan to offer them. The total amount that I just mentioned represents about 22% to 23% of our total budget, the rest coming from other sources such as tuition and philanthropy. And then in addition, on top of this, we received funding for a number of key initiatives as well, just like other state employees. The merit increase that was approved by, by the legislature was certainly appreciated, and that was 1.5% in '22, and 2% merit increase in '23. In addition, the legislature approved the funding of a nursing education consortium that spans many of the universities within the state. And this was about $1.36 million that previously had been taken out of Hyde at UND to support the rest of the entire system. In addition, the Challenge Grant Program, which gets a lot of attention, this is a matching fund program where each dollar of state funding is matched against the $2 of philanthropic or donor dollars. And so the $1.7 million we received on the Challenge Grant Funds really generates a lot of interest on our donors' part. And so we fully anticipate that we'll get the two-for-one match from our donors. In addition, the School of Medicine, which had been written out of the Challenge Grant Program in a previous legislative session, was added back in. And so that was to the tune of another $1.5 million. So this was all good news. You heard from Keith on the research funding. This is a big area of interest for our university systems, particularly UND and ESU. We believe that the product of our research efforts, this isn't mad scientists in the basement of some building on campus staring at test tubes all day long. This is the idea of creating new technologies, new ideas, new products that can really benefit the economy of the state of North Dakota. And so the exact amount coming through legacy fund earnings is unknown at this point, but it's balanced against the LIFT program. So when you think about LIFT as the final 20 yards and the research, the hard work that goes into the research on the front end as the first 80 yards, there'll be a balance of about $30 million that will be spread among those activities. In addition, we had put forward an idea for the state to support research efforts related to the new US Space Force. And the Space Force, of course, a new branch, great opportunity for partnerships, as Senator Kramer and Senator Hovind have both brought leaders from the US Space Force to campus and to Grand Forks. And we think there are huge opportunities to take advantage of those relationships. And so the legislature agreed and allocated $4 million as essentially startup funding to help us build some capacity on campus to do things like design, build, and test satellites, to do things like, how do you do ground-based control of satellite systems using autonomy or artificial intelligence to make that process happen even better? And it's certainly got the interest of the Space Force. We have three agreements that we're currently working on with the Space Force. The first is, it's called the University Partners Program with the US Space Force. This is both ROTC and graduate scholarships, as well as research funding coming from the Space Force. And we're the first university in the US to be chosen with this designation, so that's a really good news story. In addition, there is a Space University Research Initiative that we're working on as well. The $4 million investment from the state of North Dakota will help us garner, we think, some of that additional research funding from the federal government. And then finally, the Space Development Agency, which was, the director was visiting last week, indicated that the partnership with UND will be real and substantial. And he said the $4 million that the state has invested into the university for this purpose will be incredibly valuable to make positive steps forward with the Space Development Agency. In addition to space, we have, of course, energy, which gets a lot of people's attention in the state. And the Energy and Environmental Research Center has played a key role in the state. Funding has continued to flow to the EERC. $5 million was allocated to continue the designation as the state's Energy Research Center. So this is a basic research element of the EERC. And then in addition, funded research projects to the tune of $10 million for the EERC. Next, we saw the flight apron out at the airport. So this was a project that was started, I think, two or three biennium ago, and about a third of that project remained. And so the legislature allocated $5 million of federal funding to support the restoration of this remaining portion of the flight apron. The reason that's important is when the, if the ground is in disrepair, if the concrete's in disrepair, that can damage the aircraft, and it can harm the students and the pilots who are flying those planes. And then finally, the last item was to support forensic examiners. So our medical school actually supports the state with forensic work. And so they allocated $1 million to the School of Medicine to do that work. And then, as Keith mentioned, the LIFT funding, a variety of commerce programs, both the Invest in North Dakota bill, as well as the LIFT program, are huge booms for our local economy. I think they'll, we have a tried-and-true record of using that funding very well, and we know that that will continue in this biennium as well. And then, so what didn't UND get? Just two quick items. It was a really, I mentioned, it was a very positive session for us. The High Performance Computing Network that was previously funded in the previous biennium was not funded this time. We'll have to use potentially some of the research funding or other funds to make sure that initiative exists. This is our high-speed connection to what's called Internet 2, and then computing resources on campus to make sure we can do data-rich analysis and computing. And then the second item that wasn't funded was the renovation of Merrifield Hall and Twomley Hall. This was a total effort, originally 56 million, that we pared down to 5 million to start a design study for that project. And then finally, they said, we're not going to fund that project. And I think what's going to happen is we'll wait to see what kind of federal stimulus funds exist, and then hope that this proposal carries its weight. The good news about that proposal is it reduces, helps us reduce the total square footage on campus by a significant amount. As we try to right-size the campus and modernize the spaces for our students and our faculty members, this Merrifield-Twomley project is essential to making the next step in that journey. So those are the elements. We had a lot of good wins and then some, a couple areas that we'll keep fighting for. So thank you for your attention, and back to Keith.
Do you have any questions? I also want to, while you're thinking of a potential question, the chamber's going to be hosting you. For those groups who know, we're hosting a business after hours, Tom Sawyer, at Grand Scott on June 24th from 5:07. And you are all welcome. That's your baby, so I'd love it if you guys came out to that. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask any of us, Madam Chair, members.
Madam Chair, if I could add, one thing Barry reminded me, we don't have Ryan Reiser of our airport here, but they have a large runway project that's moving forward, I think about 115 million. And so that's a huge priority for our community and region, and so that's another win. Not only the state side and the federal side, because we're in line now to make that happen, and it's going to be a multi-year project. So that's really another terrific win for our community, and let's get a lot more flights in here, and let's keep aerospace moving forward. But so that's another big win for our community.
And as a board member on Airport Authority, the strategic plan is just laying out the process so nicely. And the federal, the FAA is very happy to see it's laid out according to the strategic plan. So we on the board are very excited about that. Also, the fact with the relationship with university and all the aviation students, our numbers didn't go down as significantly during the pandemic as other regional airports, so that was good. And I think in the last couple weeks, there were like two or three times that Grand Forks had more touchdowns and liftoffs than any other airport in the United States. So we're always excited to talk about that. So that's a good thing. Do you have any questions or comments from the commission? The only comment that I want to make as the chair of the commission, being involved with this group for quite some time, it's nice to see Team Grand Forks collaborate together, a university economic development, the chamber, the city, and the county. Many times, I've seen contention between counties and city regions. Bismarck Burley has issues, Fargo-Cass has had issues. You don't hear as much about Minot and Ward County, but in Grand Forks County, granted, we aren't always in agreement with the exact direction to go, but we talk about it, we work it out, we discuss it so that we can... with the exact direction to go, but we talk about it. We work it out. We, we discuss it so that we can show that we need to collaborate together here before we take it, whether it be Washington DC, whether it be Bismarck, we need to work together as a whole group. Because what you see at the legislature is when the other groups come together and one is saying one thing, the other one is saying something else. It's like, why can't you guys figure this out together? You want us to fund this, but you want this and you want this. And it's really obvious that they appreciate the fact that there's a lot of discussion that takes place and conversations that take place before the session. And it isn't just before the session. As you said, Keith, we've got, you know, another session in two years. Well, we can't just sit back and say, oh, our biennial session is over. We have to keep working, working together, moving forward to make sure that we have everything shovel ready so that we can present it to the legislature and they're willing to listen to us as a whole group and, and hopefully fund it. Obviously with many of the, many of the bills that you talked about, that's evident. And so I'm, I'm proud that, that we work together and we get through our, our tussles locally before we take it statewide or federally. And so congratulations to all of us because we do a very good job in getting funding from the federal and the state government. And thank you very much for your report. It's very much appreciated. Have a good evening, gentlemen. Okay, the next item on our agenda is correspondence. We've got a Grand Forks planning and zoning public hearing that is coming up. And then I think that's the only announcement that we have. Okay. And would someone like to make a motion to the chair? And is there a second? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of motions, we are basically saying I oppose inside. Motion is carried. Is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your attendance.